Let me get this meeting started. I am Marty Silverstein, I am the acting mayor. It's the mayor and the mayor pro tempore vote at ten. Okay, so having said that. Yeah, my agenda. Oh, yeah. Point of need to order. If you're here to talk with something not on the agenda, please, there's a sign up was there, please sign. Okay, so we have a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Ben Bonpok. Chris Hassig.
Here.
Lonnie Kitchen.
Here.
Colin Laird.
Here.
Marty Silverstein.
Here.
Erica Sparhawk. Luis Cianus.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The first thing on the agenda is our consent agenda tonight. And that includes the Board of Trustees Camp Pable report. Thank you for your job, Kristi, giving us money. Construction contract for twenty twenty-four from Rello Roofing Gateway RV Park Bath S Roof replacement. This construction contract twenty twenty-four Thomas Flamingen sofa spot gazebo repairs. Monthly sales tax report by on January twenty-four sales. Garfield County mosquito mosquito control memorandum of understanding. The Intergovernmental Agency mosquito. The retail marijuana license renewal for tumbleweed liquor license renewal. For RVR Master Association liquor license renewal for pollinated chocolate. Comdale Micro Mobility twenty twenty-four pilot program contract. Downtown of contract memo and downtown public deal contract draft. Does anyone have? Any questions on the consent agenda?
No, thank you.
That is the fine draft of the downtowner, right?
For the pilot program.
You want to make a motion, I'm willing to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Louise, second by Lonnie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Okay. That was Chris who said no.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna very briefly. We have people not on the agenda who want to comment. Just going to go over these rules for one second, then we're going to have it come up. If you haven't signed up, please sign the sign up sheet with your name. Everyone will have three minutes. Okay? What happened to hear your suggestions, comments, criticisms? We're going to ask that you respect, keep the conversation productive and healthy, request the following. Everyone is limited to three minutes per person. Keep the comments and criticisms positive and avoid individual attacks on those present or other people. Maintain your decorum and be respectful. Direct your comments to me as the acting mayor, not the other members of the board or staff. Should you quote, inspire the board to discuss your topic further, the board may have additional conversations this evening or schedule your title for future agendas for the public to participate. I just want to remind you. Couple weeks ago, we had a very lively discussion on this subject. And the board voted unanimously, I believe it was, not to put this on the agenda. But everyone's entitled to their three minutes of public comment. So with that, with the first person, and I will be timing you, I will give you notice from this ten second sub draft. With the first person, please come up. As I said, address me and we'd be glad to hear your comments.
Sue Gray.
Hello, Marty.
Hello, Sue.
Tonight, I'm speaking as a historian. And I want to say that if we don't learn from history, we are doomed to repeat it. Everyone knows that phrase, but hardly any of us say it. So I just want to remind people that the nine eleven attack was in part due to US unconditional support of Israel. And I know that a town resolution on a ceasefire in Gaza won't stop the attack. But it will go a long way toward goodwill from the Islamic world. Understanding that communities must register our desire for peace and justice so that history will record that we weren't all silently complicit. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. To the next person, please.
John Wallace.
Hi, John Wallace, I live here in Carbondale. I wish to support the council's decision not to put the proclamation on the agenda. I'm speaking for many of the Jewish, in the Jewish community in Carbondale and in Byers, and also the five rabbis of the glory park there.
Thank you.
Tim Rack.
Good evening, my name's Tim Racky. I'm a full-time resident of Carbondale. And homeowner here. On March eighteenth, I sent a proposal via email to Markham, and she kindly forwarded that on to all of the trustees. My first question that I made, Marty, is, has everyone seen that email and read that proposal?
Well, I know we've, we've all received the proposal, is that correct?
Yes.
I can't say was they right, I think we've all received it.
If they hadn't, I was willing to give a copy here tonight, but maybe that's not necessary.
I don't think so, I mean, if you want to give a copy to the town clerk, that's fine.
I'll be glad to, when I'm finished here. Basically, I, I, I have, I have two motivations for my proposal. One is a real concern for public safety. And the other is the appropriate use of public funds. So I'm proposing the following, that the town of Carbondale creates and collects a fund controlled by the town that be specifically used to acquire charter bus services or scheduled commercial bus services for transport of the illegal newcomers out of our community and into a self-declared sanctuary authority. Allowing cash contributions and donations for those who wish to participate anonymously. Several influential Carbondale residents have committed to start to create this fund with a fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred dollar cash contribution to the town of Carbondale. My sense is that there's many others that would contribute to this plan as well. Remaining excess funds available after this relocation effort can be donated to a deserving local community charity such as Lift Up or Stepping Stones at the discretion of the Board of Trustees of Town of Carbondale. This effort would incur minimal cost impact to the town of Carbondale as it would only require a few hours of staff time to publish the plan, manage the funds, and organize the actual transport. I propose this newcomer relocation fund as an augmentation tool to the newcomer response plan under development by the town and involve local entities. The fund would add an actionable option readily available when other aspects of the NRP become underfunded, exhausted, or unable to be executed.
Have your picture up and up, please.
Yes. So I'm requesting that this plan be placed on the agenda for the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, I believe that's April ninth, for further discussion and potential action. And I think this gives some time for the town attorney to review as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next?
Christina Flores.
I'll submit these revised resolutions. Good evening and thank you for your time. Since March twelfth, when ceasefire now roaring for valley, ask this board to add a ceasefire resolution to the agenda. One thousand one hundred and forty-nine Palestinians have been killed. In the same time period, Israel has reported four Israeli soldier fatalities. The number of Palestinians facing catastrophic levels of food insecurity has gone from over point five million to one point one million per report by the UN Office for the Coordination of Humanitarian Affairs. The UN Security Council managed to pass a temporary ceasefire resolution with the US abstaining in the Robitoei, which is a significant step that reflects the effect of citizen protests and pressures, including via municipal ceasefire resolutions. Yet a two-week ceasefire for which the US did not affirmatively vote does not mean that the urgency of this issue, that its moral claim to take up time and space in the public domain is over. And so we are back to ask this board to reconsider their stance. On March fourteenth, Ceasefire Now RFE hosted a talk by Professor Madir Hashemi of Georgetown University, who spoke to a crowd of over eighty, including a handful of folks who opposed our resolution. In his closing, Dr. Hashemi encouraged the audience to ask themselves, if I had lived through X or Y atrocity, what would I have done? He stated that what he would have done is what he is doing, which is what our group is doing, striving to educate to both spaces of dialogue, to keep the issue in the public domain, and to demand accountability. So in this spirit, we believe it is our moral responsibility to keep a ceasefire in the public domain, which includes continuing to invite you, our locally elected officials, to call for an immediate ceasefire. At this last meeting, we encouraged you to say that you did not support adding a ceasefire resolution to the agenda for fear that it might be too divisive. This hesitation prompted reflection for us. In response, we reached out to members of the Down Valley Jewish group, who did not wish to engage in drafting a new resolution. So we did our best to revise the resolution, which I provided to the clerk, based on the concerns that we heard from our fellow community members. In a similar vein, we heard your concerns about the time commitment of this resolution, which you indicated might keep you from acting on other things that immediately affect the citizens of Carbondale. We are so grateful for your time, but we disagree that this issue is something that does not immediately affect Carbondale. We, your constituents, we weekly for at least two hours because we care and because we believe in this community. We believe in Carbondale's capacity to understand that taking a stance against a war that has killed more children in four months than children killed in conflicts around the world in the past four years does affect us.
Thank you, Christina. Could you please write it up?
Yeah. It does affect us, how can it not, when we know that we are funding destruction? Your time is valuable and meaningful and can be valuable and meaningful beyond ensuring liquor and marijuana licenses are approved, repairs are made, and traditions for the community are nurtured. We hope that you will join us in peace and add a ceasefire resolution to your next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nikki Delson. No applause, please.
I'm here representing myself, not any other organization. I just want to clarify, one thing is that nobody reached out to the Down Valley Jewish Organization because there is no such organization, just a bunch of people. But I want to talk to you about something about conversations that I did have. And even though this is really, really hard, and I feel really, really divisive and very, very personal, something good has come out of it, and that's what I want to share with you because we could all walk away from this feeling really terrible. Before the last meeting, the last March meeting, Dave Reed of Ceasefire Now did reach out to me and said, let's get together and chat, which we weren't able to do before the last meeting, but were able to do after the last meeting. And I've also spent, I spent probably an hour and a half, two hours talking with Dave. I don't personally, not representing anybody. And I've also spent probably two hours talking with Will. Well, that's Will Hodges, who's also one of the leaders. When I talked with Dave, it was, it's very hard to allow yourself to be vulnerable, and I didn't know him. But we met outside of Bonfire, both just talking from our hearts and from our moral compasses, which led us to this place in this time, and about the foundation of ethics which we have lived our lives by, leading us to this place. And we're sitting outside of Bonfire on one side of the door, and there was somebody sitting on the other side of the door doing something on a computer. And we talked for about an hour on a personal level, without talking about, really about Israel or about Hamas, but really about who are you personally and what brings you to this place in this point in time? And for those of you who know me, you know that everything that I've done in this community is about building community. And at the end of our meeting, a woman sitting on the opposite side, who I thought was just doing computer work, as Dave and I were getting ready to leave, came over to us and said she was sorry for eavesdropping, but she couldn't help it. And she really wished that there were more conversations like that in the community because that's what brings us together. Thank you for letting me share that story. I hope to continue conversations with people in the ceasefire group and would be happy to do that, and I'm very, very grateful to both Will and Dave for giving me the opportunity to grow and to change and to do what I think is most important, which is to do it on behalf of Carbondale. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Thank you, who's next?
Mr. Thompson.
Yes. First one thing that I noticed is that Carbondale really came together to do things that were difficult to do and inappropriate to accommodate the requirements that came here. And I thank you all for the hat on the back for that when rest of the county didn't. The other thing is I know the rabbis, the six men's brothers and some of them, and they're fine, wonderful people, but we all in history come to a point where we need to understand and forego, we're, we're here because of a conquest and acquisition of the lands of the Indians. And if we can't recognize now that we're in this position to make a conscious position as about what's going on in Gaza, not that it's all Jewish or all. A lot of them are actually, a lot of them are Episcopalians. Did even know that. That there's, that there's a broad segment of society over there that's just being pushed off their land. So we need to look ourselves at ourselves in the mirror as though we were living a hundred, a hundred and fifty years ago in the real time of slavery, in the real time of the Indian wars, and decide what we would have done at that time, because that's what we're representing now. And it doesn't matter where our name goes and how we vote. Thank you, sir.
Richard Botero.
Richard Botero, I live in Carbondale, and I'm comfortable here. And that brings a lot of sadness to me that there are so many people under deep strife in a country far, far away. And it's even difficult to get any sort of aid into them. And I think that's a major atrocity. There are a lot of people that live there, that are in the way of a conflict and a conquest. And I have just one voice to say, stop. Ceasefire. Solve this a different way. Nothing's being solved this way. And a lot of people are losing their lives. It's just, it's a terrible atrocity. And the United States is supportive of that. These little tiny movements that, oh, we might be dissatisfied with what's going on. And it's just unfathomable that we should lend ourselves to what's happening in Gaza and the rest of the area. Ceasefire now.
Thank you.
And last, we have Bernard Grauer.
Good evening. I appreciate your willingness to listen to the presentation of diverse voices in the valley. That was not the case in Glenwood Springs. And I'm here to present an alternative resolution on the resolution of the Hamas war. The ceasefire now roaring for Valley Resolution adopted by Glenwood Springs failed to acknowledge that Hamas started the war with murderous rampage. Resolution for an unconditional and permanent ceasefire would allow Hamas to reorganize and finish the job. Hamas is an extremist Islamic terror organization similar to ISIS, according to Middle East expert Dr. Nadir Hashem at a recent Aspen lecture. For Hamas free Palestine means killing all the Jews and then ruling an extremist Islamic dictatorship where Palestinians would not be free. Both the US and the European Union have designated Hamas as a terrorist organization. Hamas committed the following five war crimes when it invaded Israel, according to the Geneva Conventions. It purposely placed its civilians in harm's way by putting military targets in dense population centers. It intentionally killed civilians, including infants and children, took hostages, and tortured its victims. Just like ISIS in Iraq, Hamas weaponized inhuman sexual violence against women. These crimes forced a stark choice on Israel. It can dismantle Hamas and its military, causing horrendous civilian casualties or be brutally exterminated again. Hamas can never legitimately govern Gaza. This ultimate resolution makes a ceasefire conditional on the immediate release of all hostages. It calls for acknowledgement that Hamas started the war by committing multiple war crimes against Israelis. Two, the war and parties are to immediately negotiate a truce to allow for the return of Israeli hostages and Hamas prisoners. Three, Israel to allow massive amounts of humanitarian aid to reach Gaza. And finally, supporting President Joe Biden's bedrock commitment to the continued existence of Israel and the Israeli Jews. Thank you, and I'll deliver my resolution.
Thank you. Okay, who is next?
That's all. That is signed up.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. This is the best example of free speech that I could have hoped for. And I hope everyone took advantage of their three minutes and were able to present your views. And then we appreciate that. And having said that, we're going to move on to our next order of business. And that is going to be trustee conference. So who up here would like to start? I think Chris, I think Louise. Do we need to start now? Yes, start. Okay, first off, next Tuesday is election day, and I'd remind everyone, there's six people running for trustee. And this is your chance to elect who you think is best suited to the job. And we'll tell you who to vote, I will tell you get out and vote. The other thing is previous trustee, John Folkerod had a birthday, so we did happy birthday, John. And I know you did a good job celebrating because it falls on St. Patrick's Day. So you always do a good job celebrating. Having said that, we have two members that aren't here tonight. So I'm going to try to stick to the agenda as closely as possible. I went to a tree board meeting. I feel like it's been a privilege to work with them. The EAB disease gave the tree board more public scrutiny, which is good because it's still the way it's always done. It's cared about the trees in town, their health, and also future placement of trees in town. So they do a good job. Lauren, why don't we have the the night for the different town commissions for people to sign up? In May?
Sorry, it will probably be in early May.
Early May. We're going to have something here at town hall. This board cannot do its work without the different commissions. Planning Zone, the Tree Board, Parks and Rest, Bicycle and Pedestrian. There are many, many of them. And they are volunteer positions. I think almost everyone here started out involved with one of the commissions. So if you want to get involved in public affairs or the political process, it's a real good place to start. It's your town, and that's a good way to have it. But having said that, I will, if anyone else has a comment? Yeah, trustee Colin, please.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out and expressing their opinions tonight. I am not interested in putting this on the agenda, down to debate. I don't think this is something that we really can debate based on some of the challenging sides to this story. I'm encouraged by Nikki's conversations with Will and Dave, I would encourage you to do more of that. And I'd encourage you to keep pushing on our senators and our administration to pressure efforts to resolve this situation. It's a very difficult and tragic situation, but I'm not supportive of having this board debated.
My house for this evening, thank you, Marty.
Okay, so that's it, now thank Chris. So having said all that, let's see who's up next. I think that will be that would be you. Town attorney, thank you very much, Mr. Acting Mayor, but nothing to add. Okay. And then Lauren, it's your turn.
Okay, I'd like to add a couple of things to your comments about the election, Marty. Just a reminder that on April second, the polls will be open at town hall from seven AM to seven PM. And all ballots are due no later than April second in order to be counted. Just to let you know, we are very busy working on some grants and an application for congressionally directed spending for town center affordable housing and also for electrification of the new pool project and this building. I will keep the board posted on what's happening with both of those things. And lastly, with regard to the newcomers, not much of an update this evening. I will say that the town hall shelter is down to about five or six people sleeping here at night. We have had a number of people find either employment or housing or both. And we've also provided some bus tickets for people who wanted to relocate to other places, some to Denver, some to Washington DC. Some to Denver, some to Washington DC. Maybe there's discussion of someone going to Florida, I don't remember. The shelters will both close on Monday morning, April 1st at 8:00 AM. Dinners have already stopped at the elementary school. Grab and go breakfasts are still being delivered through Friday of this week. And then the parking lot, the safe zone parking lot and the free showers at the rec center continue to April 19th. And then we're still working on a more regional response with nonprofits for case management, including legal and medical and some housing navigation assistance with you know, things like learning English and those kinds of things. That's pretty much all I have, but I'm happy to answer any.
So you would say we're still making progress in terms of getting the majority of our newcomers relocated?
We are making progress.
Still, some of them are getting one-on-one counseling to try to help them.
They have almost all been interviewed individually to talk about what their needs are and what their status of planning is and what help they might need in doing so. There have been a number of local residents who have stepped up and offered rooms for rent, trailers for rent, jobs, et cetera. And some of those have the potential of being very long-term. So.
We are still, we're keeping the porters hands at the
For the next three weeks.
Right, and we also are keeping security.
That's correct.
Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you. Let's move on to action items. And we start with the Red Cross Onform Nation. During the American Red Cross Month in March, we write with courage and compassion to people in Carbondale and reaffirm our commitment to care for one another in times of crisis. That's why you are here. Thank you. One of you, yourself, and please tell us how the American Red Cross helps all of us.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Christie Kasser. And I am the Executive Director of the Western Colorado Chapter of the American Red Cross. Our chapter office is located in Grand Junction, New York, so 27 counties on the western slope. So pretty much the entire western slope. And so we're so happy to be here tonight. Thank you so much for having me. In recognition of Red Cross Month, which is something that started over 80 years ago. It's like sort of, excuse me, President Franklin D. Roosevelt issued the first Red Cross Month proclamation. And that's something that's continued with every American resident since then. So thank you for being a part of that. During March, we celebrate our local volunteers and community heroes who are here to help ensure that their neighbors here in Carbondale don't face them with crisis alone. And that's made possible by 49 volunteers in the Lowering Park Valley area who gave over 2,250 service hours in the last year. And that shows up as installing 102 smoke alarms in homes, making 291 people safer. And, excuse me, training 76 people how to perform hand movements to PR so they can be there during an emergency. Being trained in mask care sheltering so they can open the shelter if needed during disaster and responding to home fires and assisting families on their worst day. So thank you again for your fellow volunteers. We're very happy to be part of the community and recognize and celebrate our amazing local volunteers here.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Red Cross, for what it does. Thank you to people in Baltimore with and the first responders and Red Cross is always there if it's a fire or if it's an accident or whatever it is. They're always there to support those who are affected by the disaster and also the first responders. So having said that, has everyone read the proclamation? Do I have a motion to that we should sign the proclamation?
I'll make a motion to pass this proclamation.
Do we have a second?
Seven.
Okay, all those who vote in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay? Okay, the motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you for what you do and thank you for coming and reminding us what you do.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so we will move on. We have we have a letter of support for a grant. And there's a memo here for it and some documentation for it. Has everyone seen the memo?
Yes.
Okay. So just very briefly, they're asking for grant application to seed ads or Office of Innovative Mobility seed funding for transportation management organization. Grant is what we call they would be asked to become financial partner and contribute to the local manage.
Marty, can I interrupt you for a second? There is no requirement for a local match. It may make the grant application more competitive. But CLEAR is not asking for that at this time, which is why I put that line in italics. The board can choose whether or not to leave it in or to take it out.
Okay, well, let's just look at this because we've had, we know we're hiring some of the mobility stuff. This seems to kind of tie in with that. Having said that, have we all looked at this? Do we have any opinion about whether we should consider? They don't have, well, first of all, do we support the application for the grant? That's the first thing.
Yes.
I guess I have some questions about the transportation management organization, whether that's a desirable goal necessarily. Is that something that do you put in, essentially, and creating additional layers of organization without a new role?
No, it hasn't, it really has nothing to do with RAFDA. It's about how how to coordinate, wasn't really prepared to answer, answer this. It's really more about how to coordinate road design and structure to assist with traffic control in this particular instance on I-70 and 82 in Glenwood. Traffic management organizations are generally, in my experience, which obviously didn't, wasn't from Colorado, done at the COG level. But our COG is very far away and not all that active locally. So this is an opportunity to, it's really a partnership between CLEAR and Glenwood, which can, of course, have an effect on our population since so many people commute, work here and commute down Valley and have to go through Glenwood to get back and forth to work and shop and what have you. So it's really not, it's not about RAFDA, it's not about mass transit, although mass transit obviously plays a role in how you design roads and get back and forth through Glenwood.
Yeah, so RAFDA talked about this in the
Yeah, I believe they already have.
This is not in RAFDA anyway. If you'd be down the road, if you had it going, they're not there.
And so this, the, in practical matters, the goal of this would be to hire somebody into the CLEAR organization?
No.
To run this management. What is CLEAR's role?
Their role is to spearhead.
Thank you, Paul.
And so ironically, their staff person is supposed to be there at 7:00.
Yeah, exactly. For running ahead, like Lauren, where are you?
So this really came out of Glenwood Springs Traffic, their studies, and trying to figure out what they could do to work better with employers. And because there's a lot of people who are going to drive, how do they manage them? So how do they create, so this grant is to start doing some planning to figure out how you set the infrastructure up for a TMO.
And this is, so this is the like organization structure?
Yeah.
And it is envisioned as an entirely new organization that's not under the city of Glenwood or?
They haven't even gotten there. I mean, ideally, this is something that is probably going to be wrapped up, but we're not even there yet. So they're working to figure out how to get the planning grant, how they put bases together, find a coalition together. Mostly also with the private sector, not just the public sector to work on this.
Okay, just, so first of all, Glenwood Springs has said that they are supportive of this.
It's, Glenwood Springs is a principle.
And they thought that they might be financially supportive of it as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think the first question is, are we supportive of?
I think so. I want to know more, obviously, I think, and probably, obviously, that's why you want to have the study is to try to figure out. I don't want, I mean, I don't know how much it's going to, what is it, it's a $100,000 study?
Well, it's a $100,000 grant that would help stand up an effort around transportation management.
Call, give to what other municipalities are involved?
Right now, Glenwood is the prime. And we're next. It's going to be a focus on the Down Valley for now and see how that plays out.
But we all know how I-70 and 82 affects us. I-70 is close, we don't get further into this storm, right? 82, there's an accident, it gets backed up paralysis. It doesn't sound like this actually addresses that in terms of I-70. Well, this is pretty much about the traffic.
This is also one of the things that we've done in the past few years. And I think it started, it started before my time, but I think when the bridge was being rebuilt in Glenwood with trying to get people out of, you know, single vehicles. And so the, and I don't know, most of you probably already know this, but some of you might not, that the town of Carbondale actually bought a Ford Transit van that our employees drive back and forth to Down Valley in a ride share. Things like that, to look at those kind of innovative solutions, both on the government side and on the private business side, to try to figure out how to make traffic better since it's not like Glenwood has a bunch of room for new roads to go around.
Can we not have a presentation from somebody representing that organization?
They're not, uh, no.
We have a idea. And it was the same concept that was raised at that forum and some questions were asked about, well, could in the background then this be a method of getting people permanently out of their vehicles if identified? And the gentleman at the time said, no, that's really not one of the priorities of this particular undertaking at this time. But, you know, I can understand, it's a complicated situation, especially for us where we're geographically located at the intersection of I-70 and 82 and 133. So it would be worth it to do a more in-depth study to document some of this government traffic, to see how it would help all communities that were willing to purchase a capacity.
Well, and part of what a TMO does is gather that kind of data to be able to come up with solutions or potential solutions.
One of the things we really struggle with as a region is we have no information about where people are going, why, and how. We just have less private people. So in the past, we've done travel betting studies, but we haven't done one in about 10 years. Not that this would do that, but it would be looking at some of the ways that we can get better information about what's happening in our region in regards to how people are traveling and how they're getting where they need to go.
Okay, so I see two boxes. First, do we support the motion to support the letter of support for this money request? That's the first thing.
So just to be clear, I also have a conflict. So if there's money involved, I'm going to recuse.
I'm speaking about money, just speaking about, do we support?
And as a board member, as the board members of this board, RAFDA, we strongly recommend doing this. The RAFDA currently is not set up well to do this work. And I think this is a really neat opportunity, given that Glenwood's taking a main role to increase our capacity to figure out how we do better by dealing with some of the traffic issues we have in the region.
Okay, so having said that, is there a motion to get the money just to support CLEAR's going after this grant? I mean, I will make a motion to support that. We have, there was a motion by Chris, a second by Louis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. So that's the first thing. The second thing is about the money, and you have to recuse yourself. And Mark, if we only have four people, can we vote on that or? Okay, so we can.
Marty? Yeah. I'm sorry, Marty. First of all, CLEAR is here. Second of all, you're not voting to allocate money. It's just whether to leave the sentence in that's saying, that's saying the board would be willing to entertain a request if the grant is awarded.
So, um, okay? Yeah, you're okay, I guess.
Yeah. And Lauren may want to say something because we're kind of done, but.
We're trying to keep our tone.
This is Lauren from CLEAR. We just are a lot earlier than we thought we were going to be. Go on over and turn on a mic. Hit the button on the mic. There you go.
Lauren, Sarah with CLEAR, I'm a renewable energy program manager. Thank you for discussing this. Mary, thanks for participating.
Stumbling over it, stumbling over it, more like.
Oh, okay. So we are looking for a letter of support for this grant application in partnership with Glenwood Springs. I believe at this time, a commitment or request, specific request for funding is not what we came to you tonight for, just to look for for this letter of support. I'd love to take questions back to the team if needed and answer what I can right now. Our transportation program manager is out of town, I apologize, but I'm doing some backgrounds.
Okay, so does anyone on the board have any questions? Or have we answered the questions?
Well, maybe we did just bring her up to speed. We've agreed to provide a letter of support. Then the question now is, do we leave the language that says we will entertain a match if the grant is awarded? So that's kind of what we're.
Well, I would just say, since we don't have to actually get into that at this time, I would suggest that we just leave it where we, we'll give you the letter of support so you can proceed. And in such time, if you want to request the money, then come back again to discuss it at that time.
That would be wonderful. I'm sure that, again, Mary Harland, the Transportation Manager, would love to give you a further presentation about that, you know.
Does the board come up with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and I think that's what we're going to do. We already agreed to give you the letter of support to go ahead with the grant. And if at future time, if you feel that you want funding, and I'm sure you will, come back and ask us, and we'll decide at that time whether we're comfortable with the funding.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Lauren, I'll get Erica to sign it tomorrow and get it over to you.
Okay. Should I slow down?
No.
Okay, well, tell them about dandelion days. All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you for putting on dandelion days. Ally, good save.
Thanks for having us. My name is Luke Wander. I just want to recognize the work of Quinn Port and Kat Hardy. They're the main organizers for dandelion day, and they're not here. I'm just the one to put the term and application together, so. Just want to give you a short rundown of dandelion day this year, not many new changes. It'll start at 9:00 AM on May 11. At 10:00 AM, that day, we'll have our Creative Species from Second and Main to all the sopas park. At 10:30, Boneville Ballet, followed by the Soper Source. At noon, we're going to have the Queen bees perform again. I'm looking forward to that. They'll do some musical chairs. At 2:00, we've got a new bluegrass band, Twisted Traditions. I'm hoping to hear from them, or a lot more from them in years to come. We'll also have our slow bike race on Seventh Street at 2:00. At 3:00, we're going to have our second annual seed swap. I don't know if any of you last year were able to At three o'clock, we're gonna have our second annual seed swap. I don't know if any of you last year were able to get on the tail end of that. Um, but we collected seeds from the community all day, and then at three o'clock, like people kept packets of different things, it was really fun. Thanks. Um, at three forty-five, we have Sweet Jessup and the Dirty Buckets, and we'll wrap things up at five. Um, some other details, we're doing our security again through Colorado Protective Services. Uh, we like working with them last year, the CD, so we're gonna move over that again. Um, in terms of street closures, I spoke with Eric this morning, and we just cleared up some really small details, and, um, in addition to the parade closure from all the way, I think, from Snowmass on Main Street to, um, Wentz, and we're gonna kind of curve down in there and sit in the park, and, um, that's just like a thirty-minute closure uh, from about nine forty-five to ten fifteen AM on that Saturday, and then all day, we're looking to have, um, Seventh closed from about seven AM to five PM at the end of the event, and then that's from Main Street to Euclid, and then Wentz closed from Main Street to Euclid. Um, and we will be taking, putting those signs up and taking them down. The environmental board is doing the learning tent again. Um, we're gonna have Sue Gray talk about gang lines for food and natural medicine. Uh, Bee Friendly is gonna have a terrific buyback program, um, informational session again. Uh, Alyssa Rendell is is gonna talk, she's from Never Be the Beer Waste, um, and Suzanne Luck is gonna talk about backyard pollinators. And the only other details that, um, we're looking to have folks bring their own kind of blank t-shirts, we're using screen printing of, um, our design on the t-shirt, as opposed to buying, creating new shirts, we're gonna look to kind of integrate it into the environmental field of the whole day and have that kind of experiment with that. And I guess I'll hand it over to you, how about you, just talk about the Kiddy Day beer garden?
My name's Ally, Development Director at Kiddy and Kay. Kiddy and Kay is gonna run the beer garden again from eleven to five. Um, if you're facing the stage, we're always to the right of the stage, we'll be, um, fenced in, corralled, and we'll have beer from Mountain Heart Brewing, um, wine, various wines from Soper Slicker, and then cocktails from El Dorado. Um, we will have volunteers, uh, volunteer DJs and staff running the check-in and the, um, IDing and serving. Several of us are tips trained, including myself, um, so. Let's bring the chat. Any questions?
Does anyone on the board have questions?
No, no.
Not your first rodeo?
Not my first rodeo, just my second.
Uh, so, thank you, guys. You've always done a real nice job in the past. Please keep it up again. We have a license, temporary licenses here we have to approve. We do, okay? And who would like to make a motion to approve that?
Make a motion to approve the temporary liquor license.
Second?
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna say, Chris, we'll give this one to Lonnie. You have twenty more seconds ahead of you. She's getting close to the end, just to. Okay, so voting in favor, the temporary liquor license, and let's move to approve the End Line Day engine, because you have some street closures and stuff in here. So we have a motion from Chris, a second from Lonnie, all those in favor, say aye. 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 All those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will see you after. What date is Dandelion Days?
May eleventh.
May eleventh. Thank you. We look forward to seeing you after.
Okay.
Let's see, what do I? Moving right along, we are at one eleven Main Street, two truck court. Combined applications, attachment A, so let's go for that. Now, you see Mr. Schultz here. Do we need to take a five-minute break?
That would be very lovely.
It's unanimous.
Second on that. So let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back and we'll take a few, sorry if we're going too fast.
There.
Only after.
And you gave it to those public comments, uh, by ten o'clock. Memorize, right?
Public comment and revised motion in case you need it.
As you were people and ask these to adjust that. Yes.
Did you get that?
Included. So, you saw that, now there's something. The money today go to get tickets, the number five, point film dot org. Have we given out folks for five-point film festival? You voted to support, didn't you, same one? Mark, you're very lonely there.
Uh, others will be arriving soon.
So do we?
I promoted him, he needs to.
Should we start, should we talk amongst ourselves?
Let's just go ahead, and they've heard this talk before.
Okay, so having said that, we have some documents that were handed to us. One is from Dan Bullock, just some comments, thank you, Jerry. The other is a memo.
So I can, I can go through those if that will help me. So, um, there were two items that, um, we've provided, um, at the hearing tonight. First is a public comment received from Dan Bullock.
And this is a public hearing, correct?
It's a public hearing, um, I failed to get that in the packet for tonight's meeting, and so I wanted to make sure we handed that out, um, so it was on the record. And the second item is a memo, which is really a revised motion, and I'll kind of, um, explain the revised motion in the staff presentation, but, um, essentially, we're changing the recommendation from, um, and this is after conversations with the applicant, from a continuation of the public hearing to recommending approval of the, um, application with conditions and to direct staff to prepare, um, the necessary approval documentation, so, um, the the real change is continuation and prepare the approval documentations to approval and prepare the approval documentations. So before you tonight is a combined application for annexation rezoning, administrative site plans, alternative compliance, subdivision exemption, and a conditional use permit. Um, and so there's really two main components. You have the annexation component, and you have the combined land use component, which are the remaining applications. Um, and as a reminder, this is a notice of public hearing, and the trustees will need to allow the public at the staff and applicant presentations. Um, and so I just discussed, uh, two of the items that were handed out and why we've handed them out, um, and I'll get into the revised motion in the, uh, in the staff presentation here, but, um, as I'm sure you're aware, there's been, um, numerous reviews and public notices on this combined application. And so just real briefly, um, January ninth kind of kicked this off, um, trustees reviewed and approved Resolution Three of Series Twenty Twenty Four, which initiated the land use, um, public hearing process. Um, on February first, the HPC held a courtesy review, um, for a property within the HCC Zone District. On February eighth and twenty-second, um, there were public hearings before the Planning and Zoning Commission. On February twenty-seventh, the Board of Trustees, um, held a public hearing on the annexation and continued, um, that annexation hearing to tonight's meeting, and now tonight, you have a public hearing on the combined application. Each one of these meetings were publicly noticed, um, numerous times in Soper Sun and onsite, so, um, if you've looked at Soper Sun this year, you've probably seen a public notice for this project. Um, I'll let the applicant provide a detailed project description, um, but real quickly, um, the subject property, one-one-one Main Street's located east end of Main Street, adjacent to Main, Snowmass Drive and Catherine Store Road intersection, um, and the request is for a annexation of a seventeen-hundred square foot parcel. Um, and the application proposes to the rezone, combine lots, and ultimately get a site plan approved to, uh, construct a two-truck court. So prior to tonight's hearing, there was a, um, phasing plan that the applicant was proposing, that included phase one and phase two. Phase two largely focused on a building expansion, um, and phase one largely focused on the site and building remodel. After reviews with the, uh, Planning Commission and the HPC, as well as, um, consideration of of the cost to instruct this project, the applicant has simplified the application prior to the February twenty-second hearing, and, um, is only now proposing a single phase of development, um, and so they took a few components of phase two, which the Planning and Zoning Commission and HPC supported, combined that into, um, the one application, so if you look through past minutes, hopefully it helps and keep the dots there for you, so. Um, generally speaking, there was support by both the HPC and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, both, uh, commissions really supported the proposed adaptive reuse of the existing building, vestering scale of the property, encouraged the applicant to work with Rafta, to engage with the Rio Grande Trail, um, and, uh, largely there were, um, overwhelming support. There was some concern expressed at the Planning and Zoning Commission about parking, fencing materials, as well as the property being the eastern gateway to town, um. The applicant did make modifications after the February eighth meeting, prior to the February twenty-second meeting. Those were reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, they're incorporated into what you guys were reviewing tonight. Um, so kind of getting into the meat and bones of the, uh, review, um, the annexation parcel was located in the town periphery in our comp plan and is identified as a phase one potential annexation in the area, which the town really says it acts, feels like it's already a part of town. Um, when we reviewed the comprehensive plan, um, staff finds that the proposed project supports most of the goals and policies in essence of our comprehensive plan, um, and that the adaptive reuse and addition, uh, adaptive reuse and remodel of normal structure is supported that the town areas design for preservation, architectural variety. Um, one of the key components as we discussed is the annexation, so as I stated, Resolution Three kind of kicked this process off, and it basically found that, um, the project is eligible to be considered for annexation and initiate the process. It did not, however, um, annex the property or commit the town to annexing the property. That's what's being considered tonight. When reviewing the annexation per the comp plan, the comp plan does include a section regarding annexations and discusses, um, that an annexation should include at least one valuable asset, and throws out, um, potential options such as public trails, open space, parks, land conservation, or affordable, attainable housing exceeding the minimum code requirements. Um, and what the applicant is proposing is a one percent real estate transfer assessment on all future land sales or land transactions for this enlarged combined parcel. When reviewing this, um, overall, the staff supports the recommended annexation and does find that the affordable housing valuable asset is the most reasonable, um, of the annexation benefits for this parcel. However, housing development on this site due to the need for parking is, and HCC requirements is challenging. So, um, we do find that the proposed one percent Rita applied to future sales would be a great way to help fund um, future housing projects and missions throughout town. With that said, there is some concern about when a future property sale may occur, um, and when the town may receive any contributions to housing, housing initiatives. And as such, um, the staff is recommending that there be an initial contribution to the Community Housing Fund, so that the annexation could provide both a initial and future contribution to the town, or benefit to the town. Um, what staff is recommending, um, and this is captured in the revised motion, and it's conditions six and seven. Previously, they were combined into one condition six. We've broken that apart into two conditions. So six um, is basically the voluntary one percent Rita on future property transactions or sales. And seven is that the applicant shall provide a eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollar contributions in Carbondale Community Housing Fund. And how we arrived at that number is um, we considered what the contribution would have been if that one percent valid. One percent Rita was applied to the sale of the property that occurred when the current owners purchased it. And that equated to eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. So um, we felt that was a um, kind of a nexus between an initial contribution and a. And keeping in line with the future, um, the future sales. So um, overall, staff does support the application and um, does find that the property should be annexed into um, town and meets all the annexation criteria. Extremely briefly, the subdivision exemption request is really just to combine these various parcels into a single lot. Um, and there's really um, no concern from staff that needs all the review criteria as far as the initial zoning and rezoning. The annexation parcel is currently zoned rural by Garfield County. And the parcel in town is currently zoned um, commercial transition. The proposal is to rezone the boat for the entire combined parcel to historic commercial core. And that really continues the transition of the north side of the one hundred block of Main Street from CT to HCC. Um, one thing that we do note is we generally not, we generally prefer to not create non-conforming lots. As I outlined in the staff report, the lot depth of either the existing or the resulting lot does not comply with any of the town's. Um, minimum lot depth requirements. And so um, we felt it's important to acknowledge it in the staff report and as a condition of approval. Our, the UDC does allow a um, conditional use permit to be um, issued for a non-conform lot so that development can occur. And so one of the conditions that recommended by staff is to acknowledge the non-conformity and allow this development to occur. Um, overall, the site plan um, meets the UDC. One area that I wanted to highlight, um, that's a uh, need for an alternative compliance is the commercial space height requirement. So UDC requires a minimum fourteen foot floor to floor height for all ground floor commercial spaces in the HCC. Um, that was reviewed and discussed by the UDC and the planning zoning commission. And both um, groups as well as staff found that um, strict compliance with that would be detrimental to the um, historical architecture of the building. And found that a uh, alternative compliance is, was warranted to allow for a reduced um, floor to floor heights for this project. And kind of lastly, the conditional use permit. So it's required for any mobile vendor operating in town. Um, that would include in this mobile vendor food court. Um, in addition, the previously discussed um, need to acknowledge the non-conformity. Is also warranted or also warrants the need for a conditional use permit. And so staff is recommending with conditions um, apply to the conditional use permit. That mobile vendor permits are issued for any mobile vendor operating onsite. And that the uh, application can continue in conformance with the site plan and on the non-conforming lot. So um, again, with that, the initial staff recommendation was to continue the public hearing and direct staff to. Prepare approval documentation to present it back to the board of trustees after consulting with um, the applicant. We're revising that and that's what's been presented to you to um, recommend a motion to approve the combined application. And direct staff to prepare the necessary approval documentations. And so we've included in this um, memo handed out to you, which the applicant has um, revised the conditions of approval. One through nineteen as well as findings for each of the numerous applications before you tonight. Happy to answer any questions, otherwise I'm sure Bob can walk you through the.
A, a couple of questions then. So this is a lot next to uh, Coy Center, is that correct?
That is correct.
So that we're kind of triangular lot?
Correct, there's a single family home that exists there today and then um, essentially the site detention pond, if you will, adjacent to it.
And there is very, very limited public walk in there currently?
There is um, about one spot along Main Street at the western end of the parcel. Um, before the on-mu过的parking ends and the sidewalk meanders back to create the uh, necessary space between the intersection and any public parking.
And will that one spot still be there?
That one spot is proposed to remain.
And they are putting additional bike parking, is that correct? They're committed to that?
They're proposing ten bicycle spaces. Currently it's located in the public right of way. And one of the conditions presented is um, if there's any issues with that being in the public right of way, that they provide that onsite. So a minimum of ten bicycle parking spaces will be provided with this project.
So how are the customers supposed to get to the food trucks?
So the applicant is um, stated there's going to be a high level of walking and biking as well as utilizing the um, downtown area of parking. And so people might have to walk a block.
Two blocks.
Two blocks. Um, luckily it is right on the Rio Grande Trail. We do have the town lot and it's not that far of a distance from the dirt lot across the street to.
I mean, I'm getting ahead of myself. What time in the evening, uh, will they see South Gracians?
I'll let the applicant speak to that specifically. I don't remember the exact.
I mean, are we speaking nine or ten o'clock or are we speaking midnight?
No, okay.
Okay, thank you. I'm concerned because there are people still living in that neighborhood. Somebody else have other questions? Please stop.
Um, just for clarity, um, the conditional use permit applies to the site and not to the individual vendors, right? Okay, um, but the vendors do operate under a vendor license.
So the vendors will have to apply for a mobile vendor permit, correct?
Okay, and then um, the Rita comes to the town. And do we have identified the specific bucket that it goes into? I assume it's going to be affordable housing.
I, I think it should be the community housing.
Or community housing, whatever.
Funds. Yes, the intent is for housing initiatives, so that would make the most sense. I don't believe my motion specifies that in the Rita um, condition, but that would be the intent.
Okay, gotcha. That, that's a good one, thank you.
I would ask that, you know, that upon specifying those. I also have a thought on that. Well, the current applicant, I'm comfortable with the one percent. Future applicants, I would love to see better two percent. When the property is sold. Not to affect them, but you know, it's still. Eight thousand to sixteen thousand is a drop in the bucket as far as the water passing. You guys thought the one percent, I get it, but in the future, if it's sold, I don't think a deal will close and outclose because of the two percent disposed to one percent. It's just more money for full class and which we know is like a huge problem in this community.
So there's, sorry, is there a? There, there's plans to approach RFTA about an access to the back of the property to the. There, there aren't specific plans, but the um, applicant has indicated the willingness to, to initiate those conversations with RFTA. So long as they get approved, they just didn't want to um, muddy the water until they knew that they had a site plan approved and can move forward with this development. But.
And so picket fence will cordon off the whole property on the backside.
So right, right now what's proposed is the um, existing chain link fence along um.
The trail.
The trail will remain and a uh, cedar picket fence will be along just the southern and not the eastern. Or even myself, but yes, southern eastern property boundaries.
All right. I would, I would encourage you to try to get a gate and trail, see if there's.
Um, question, how are service vehicles supposed to um, access the little bit in terms of garbage recycling? Can you, without dedicated parking, maybe food trucks only?
Yeah, it's, the, the service vehicles would utilize the public right of way. Main Street park in the on-street parking spaces. The uh, trash and recycling and compost and all that would just be pulled out to the sidewalk in a similar fashion that we see in our residential neighborhoods.
And it, is the building considered historic then?
It's not considered historic. It is um, it, it's also not a structure of merit. It is a old building, but it was remodeled significantly in the seventies. And so I think that kind of kept it out of the historic nature. But it still has some um, historical elements to it.
Um, point of reference, was this a travel agency at one time? Yes. Yeah, that's what you might have all. Anyone else in the board have questions? I hope you hear from the applicant. Guys?
Okay. Bob Schultz here, representing one 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 Main Street, the owners of the Ridge Camp, Terrence McGuire and Pat Camp are here tonight. Rich is a local landscape architect. Pat has a local magazine and Terrence is former owner of Johnny McGuire's up in Aspen and now has a mobile food business. We also have on the Zoom, uh, Greg Rothluber from River City Consultants, who's the project engineer in case something comes up that relates to the engineering. And uh, I want to thank uh, Jared and HPC or P and Z for their work on this. It's been, uh, it's been a good, good process. Uh, some of you may have been to a food truck. Some of you may have been to a food truck court. They're a little bit different animals. The food truck is you pull into a parking lot and you throw the doors open and. You probably don't have a wash facility or a bathroom or anything. It's more like a fashion opportunity. Food truck court is more uh, towards a dining opportunity where goes a place to sit, place to go to the restroom, place to wash your hands. A place for safe food preparation. A lot of us are familiar with the one in Moab, um, that's been around for a while now and it's right in the downtown core there. That's in the center of the images on the right is the one on Main Street in Lyons, Colorado. Which is more the scale of, of this one. There's three or four trucks there in Moab, there's more like eight. Uh, and then the one in the bottom left, both Jared and I are familiar with from uh, the Miramar neighborhood of San Juan, Puerto Rico. Uh, the location, just to follow up on that conversation. So the red box is the property with the house, the white house. First one on the right is you're coming down Catherine Store. And then there's that funny little uh, parcel next to it. It's actually made up of two parcels and uh, and those are the subject of the annexation. The, the area in the red is currently in the town of Carbondale. So when you look at that in plan view, there's a line right along here. That's the boundary of the uh, property that's already in the town. And then there's a kind of a funny diagonal line. This property was acquired in a trade with RFTA. They cleaned up the issue of the lot that was in the rail corridor. And then this property was acquired by the previous owners from the uh, Darien estate. So there are technically three parcels. The major improvements now are the white house and the shed that's on the property. Uh, this is a little wall that was built at one point. In the past, there have been some vehicles slide into this uh, location from Main Street. And now there's some uh, boulders that are on RFA's property that uh, taking care of that. So when you're looking at it today, uh, what you see is view number one on the left. You're standing with facing the property on Main Street. And then the view on the right is the east elevation once again as you're coming into uh, town. This is what it looked like in about nineteen seventy seven. And uh, this is more of the flavor of what it would look like post uh, improvement. So you can see they enclosed the patio with some windows to get some more living space. At one point, there's somebody in this room that actually lived in this house. And uh, it's most recently, as Marty noted, a uh, travel agency. This is what it would look like after the improvements. The indoor is renovated to uh, allow a place for uh, proper bathrooms, ADA accessible bathroom. A food preparation area for safer food prep, a um, dining area and a bar. And then on the outside, there would be a deck added to the east and a portion of that would be covered uh, overhead. And to allow outdoor dining, there would be uh, doors that opened uh, to allow it's kind of an inside outfield when the weather is nice. And then uh, for the purposes of this, when we say a food truck, it could be a trailer, it can be a cart, it can be a truck. They all operate the same, same way. And so when you think of what, what they might be, that would be the range of options. And then there's some improvements, uh, an ADA ramp that would go out to the existing sidewalk. And uh, that would be within the town's right of way. Some uh, park, bike parking as was noted. And then one street tree and then another tree that we're going to use street tree inventory, even though it's not technically a street tree. This is uh, give you a sense, the upper image is once again standing directly across the street. Um, the windows are added back in and there's a little gable over the entry that is a little bit different to the roof line. When you look to the right, it starts off as a picket fence to be a little more inviting where the dining areas. And then a privacy fence as you get towards the trucks. The idea of being there to screen anything that might be on the ground, uh, propane or a trash can or whatever to uh, make it look a little nicer. And then uh, the lower view is from the east heading into town from Catherine Store. Uh, there would be trucks that would affect the view. You'll see that in a minute, but we wanted you to see the idea behind the building. And so once again, there are French doors that open out and uh, and allow an indoor-outdoor kind of a feel to it. Uh, in response to some P and Z queries, we developed some additional imaging. So this is once again from the Catherine Store direction coming into town. Privacy fence where the trucks are and then picket fence in the dining area. This would be from about in front of the uh, preschool. Uh, looking over into the site, you can see the, the ADA ramp here. And then this would be um, looking directly across into the parcel um, into the site. The planteus actions that are required to get there, I'll kind of go through briefly each one. Um, yes, I, I think as Jared noted, we feel like they meet the criteria of the um, of the code. Though we do have a couple of things that we are talking about. Going to the zoning, the town's been in the process of rezoning the one hundred block of Main Street for at least ten years, maybe more. Um, and this would be another bite of that apple. Um and this would be another bite of that apple. Started, uh it may have been in the ninety-three plan. I didn't go back and look. I kind of remember that, but I'm not sure. But the twenty thirteen comp plan designated uh this whole area as part of downtown. And then twenty fourteen, the town um rezone the south side of Main to HCC. In twenty twenty-two, the revised comp plan uh affirmed the designation and then last year, the town. Um, redid the play center in Daniel I and M to HCC. So, the criteria, it it meets the intentions of the top plan. Uh there's been a consistent uh discussion of trying to enliven this portion of Main Street. And um it's consistent with other land use actions that the town has made. Utilities are in place. We'll have to do some new service lines, but there's no uh major utility changes. Um, there's fewer turns on and off of Main Street in this location than. The alternative uses that we could envision and then uh there is limited parking in the area. And for this to be successful, we're gonna have to get people to divide, to walk. And uh whether it's from street parking or a thousand feet down to the town lot. Uh that's what's gonna be required for this to thrive. That's. A similar situation for any Main Street business is nobody guarantees you a parking spot in front of your business. So, uh you have to get people to want to go there enough to, to walk from somewhere. As far as the subdivision exemption goes, it's a little bit of an odd duck and it's really combining parcels rather than subdividing them. So, it takes these two kind of orphans that were not created through a land use action. They were created through deed and plays that up and turns it all into uh one lot. The non-conforming nature is really irresolvable because of the rail corridor. You have Main Street on one side of the property. And then the rail corridor on three other sides and uh the play center on the other side and. There's just nothing that's gonna get you to a hundred foot depth in this, in this location. In terms of the annexation, it's, it's a very small annexation, seventeen hundred and thirty-one square feet. Um, I don't know that it's the smallest one the town has ever done, but if it's not, I would be surprised. And uh one of the criteria is that it acts like it's already a part of town. If you went out and asked ten people, they would probably assume that this was part of the town already. It's just been. Kind of an oddball thing that's been out there for quite a while. So, uh the owner gets the benefit of consolidating the parcels and having it all be in the town. And the town gets the uh sales tax generated at the site and property tax and the Rita. Uh, staff has determined that this uh mobile vendor use is a conditional use. Marty asked about ours. The town code says that mobile vendors can operate between seven thirty P, I'm sorry, eleven thirty PM and seven AM. Um if that is uh objectionable, we can talk about something else in the, in the conditional use permit, but that's what the code says. All of the uh vendors have to be licensed by the town and the Department of Health. Um, there was some concern from staff about the food trucks. Some of them can be big. Uh coming in and out of the site uh with that disrupt traffic on Main Street. And there would be some periods in which there would be. A short period of time in which that would happen, so we've limited them to specific hours. And staff has added a, what I think is a reasonable condition, that if that doesn't work, we gotta get back together and find something that does. And um, and then, you know, we have to be able to attract people from the Rio Grande Trail. Otherwise, this is not gonna be a successful operation. With regard to the same review, uh it seems consistent with the comprehensive plan direction. And the ideas about having more vitality at this end of Main Street. Uh the play center is considering some additional ideas that could be another partner in that. And of course, the uh Marvel Distillery and in across the street. We were able to get good support from HPC and unanimous recommendation for approval from the P and Z. And we do have the ceiling height issue uh which we brought up early on and uh. It would just be a funny looking, that little old building and then raising it five feet would be kind of an odd looking thing in our opinion. Uh we've, we've limited the hours for the truck rotations and um. Uh we feel like it's something that people will think is fun. So, we're here, we're asking for uh the necessary approvals to give this a try.
Okay, having said that, uh I suggest we throw an open public comment. Anyone like to address the board?
I'll come up.
We thought you just came to visit Stacy.
I did. Um for the record, I'm Stacy Burnout and while my address is Carbondale, I'm on town limits. So, I can't vote for you. Well, I wouldn't vote for the preview anyway because you're done. So, and and also I came to tell Bob happy birthday as well. You'll have the same show at the end.
And David too.
Yeah, for sure. Um so, while I didn't live here, I felt like I lived here. This was my um paternal grandmother and step-grandfather's home. They purchased it in nineteen sixty-six and Jessica lives in my maternal great-grandmother's home. So, booking a Main Street there for a little bit. Um I'm so excited about this. And I decided to brave the evening to come to visit with you all and darken the door. You all have much more comfortable seats than I remember. Yeah, and and Marty, thanks for filling in tonight. I have some notes, so I'll get some notes later. Um, but this is a, this is a fun um use of this property. It's unique. The annexation, um I I shared with Rich many stories. Um it's, it's kind of interesting because the reason why this shed. Is where it's located is my grandmother wanted roosters and you can't have roosters in city limits in town. Uh those roosters were not in town limits, so her neighbors did not like this, but um she did. And um to Marty, to your point with the neighborhood and the feel and the hours, I have no doubt that this group will be respectful of that. It's way quieter on the end of the street than when the coal train was running and while you referred to it as the Catherine Store Road, it really is a cold off road. Um and with the dairy barn that used to be where, where I resided. So, um it's way chiller in that area. Um I think that with the Rita and that was talked about years ago as well. To have that other bite at the apple, so to speak, tonight, I think is not really in the best interest of this project. I know it's not a ton of money by what some people may say, um but to, to have a future Rita, I think is wise. But the sale already happened. Um these applicants are looking at creating an interesting space and not having atrocious townhomes. Or some god awful crap on Main Street. Um I think this is gonna add to the vitality with the Rio Grande Trail. It's awesome. Hopefully people hop the fence. There's no formal gate. Um but to be able to navigate that and the connectivity, I think is awesome. Um if I, as an unsupervised five-year-old, could walk from here to there every couple days. I think most able-bodied individuals can find their way to this food truck court. So, um I just want to encourage my support. Have you guys not be too onerous in this? And it's not about the applicants. While they're great people, longstanding community members, it's about what happens on this site. And to have something unique to draw people down there, people can stop there on the way back and forth to the rodeo. There's just endless opportunities for this to be successful. Um I was a little dismayed with P and Z that um they didn't like the chain link fence. If we're really going historic, that's what was there. Um so, and I think it's lower maintenance, but I think, you know, the, the beautification, the boujiness, whatever you want to say is in the eye of the beholder. But um I just want to encourage approval. I'd be happy to share any stories and bore you with that. Um and the wall, the concrete wall, while there are other rocks there now, it was poured shortly after. A vehicle incident and if it wasn't for a fruit tree, my grandmother wouldn't have been around. Um she was out turning the hose on or off and a car came through. That was back in the day when the only stop sign was the north side going down the Coldoff Road. And so people tended to go pretty fast around the corner. So, while, you know, that's that little lockdown memory lane, I'm super excited to these guys. And I know that there was some scuttle on some of the social media about, you know, frickin' mortar restaurants. We do all value those folks and those businesses, but just as we need difference in housing types. We need difference in, in choice in our food establishments. So, hopefully you go through and and Rich didn't pay me to say this, but I really think adding a Rita at this point. While I, I respect where it's coming from, I don't think it's necessary. Um unless you're, you know, gonna put it towards something like fixing the wood curbs over at Colorado Place. Or trying to find a housing source for the Thompson House. But those are other things that we can talk about later when we talk about other annexations and and how they bear it or didn't bear. So, thank you for um listening and and good luck. I'm, I'm excited for these guys.
Any other public comments? Is there anyone on the same? No. Um, how many food trucks do you envision being there?
Right now, three.
Okay. I mean, how many do you think the space for? Just that's my question.
Uh you could squeeze in another one or two there if they were all trailers or something. But uh right now, the uh, the thinking is three.
Okay. Uh, do we have anything else? Board have anything else?
Yeah, um where's the nearest recycle thing?
Katie and Kay.
Seven, that's second street.
Okay, um is there any thought about, I know there's an expansion looming in the future, perhaps being more and closer to this location? To encourage.
I think that little Raptor parking area would be perfect for that. But we'd have to work that out with Raptor. That's not an easy job.
Yeah, and as I'm looking at this, the drawings, it looks like um a diner would have to enter. The area through the house there?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, those are really my questions. And then the access from the backside from the Rio Grande Trail is to be determined, right?
In the future.
Yeah, okay. Alright, thank you.
I don't think it's that far either, just to walk around.
No. No, um I'm just thinking, you know, making it more attractive.
No, I think it would be enough.
Yeah, thank you.
And anyone else on the board? Okay, I have a question since I had suggested that the one percent and two percent in the future. Do we want to keep it that way? I like the two percent for future sales, okay? Um, the one percent stays at that point. You're gonna bring sales tax to town. Uh it's making use of a space that is sat vacant and not producing any revenue for town. And the frickin' mortar places are fine, but who would have envisioned that Fat Belly would be what it is now? So, and not all of us can afford the frickin' mortar voices given the economy and what it costs these days. Yeah, please do.
I think the one percent is appropriate because it is voluntary after all, right? I mean, you can't impose a Rita here. We have the election.
Anexations we have brought up.
But that's why, and they agreed to it. So, I mean, the one percent, I don't want to get involved, please.
Chris is correct. In an annexation, you do have more latitude. Stations, discretionary act of this town council that is not tied to the kind of. Having said that, I believe that the annexation criteria that uh for some time suggests a one percent.
Okay, so we comfortable leaving the way it is with the one percent and on any future sales of the property, it would be two percent? Apptics comfortable with that?
Um, so you're upping the ante on the Rita?
When you sell it. Okay, so there being no further public comment, let me close the public session. Board, it's up to us at this point. Someone need, I'm gonna tell you. Yeah, be more questions. Now's the time.
No.
I've made a motion. I've made a motion to approve the combined application for annexation, rezoning, administrative review. Subdivision exemption and conditional use in the food truck court at one-one-one Main Street and parcel number, really? Two three one three three four four zero zero three six and direct staff the necessary approval documents. With the following ambitions and findings of fact in the staff memo with the change to six, this is correct. And that will be two percent for future sales.
You have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay.
Thank you.
This passes unanimously. Thank you, folks. Uh I think this is a funky creative use of a very weird shaped parcel. And Terry, I'm looking forward to your food. It's a long time since I've had a tangible office. Having said that, I would encourage you, the members of the board and the public, to read the notes. Retrieve what data that the Siberian albums by the hole. Um, and there was also, I think, P and Z minutes, no, not P and Z, Fox and Red minutes. So, I see that's a thing. Yeah, there are a couple of others. I would encourage everyone to read those. And I want to thank everyone for their time and with that, this meeting is adjourned.